Jeff, can you test your mic?
Are you hearing, are you hearing me?
Ashley, Jeff, Kyle, can someone test your mic?
Uh, test is good, audio is good.
He can hear you.
We're having speaker issues in here, hold on.
He can hear you. Not sure if he can hear us.
I can hear you, Ashley, can you hear me?
Alright, we hear everyone now.
Okay.
Can you hear us, Ron?
I don't have my mic on, there we go. Let me do that all again. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our February 24th, 2005, 9:00 AM Strategic Planning Meeting for the Board of County Commissioners for Spokane County. It is 9:35. We are starting late as we have had technical difficulties and we have moved from our board conference room over to the hearing room to get started today. So I will call this meeting to order, let the record reflect that we have all five commissioners are here. Commissioner Waldorf is on Zoom. And we'll go ahead and get started and we'll just make do with the day. So Chris, if you want to go ahead and come up and start?
Alright, can everyone hear me? Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, so I am here to discuss some hopefully strategy or goals that the commissioners want to outline for the Housing and Community Development Advisory Committee. Over the couple, last couple of years or year and a half, I've been bringing some of the recommendations from that committee to the Board of County Commissioners and a couple of, some of the feedback that we've heard is that we want some additional kind of guidance. Or at least strategy brought to that meeting, so the advisory committee has some, has some, um, some input to go off of. I've engaged with all of the commissioners over the last couple of weeks, so I want to, I appreciate everyone meeting with me and having those discussions. And I was able to bring a couple of recommendations that I kind of compiled together and put in front of you with, of course, a small graph indicating, as we've all discussed, the, the indication that we'll receive less funding from most of these grant sources over the next two years. If you look kind of at the big, uh, slides, I guess to the right, you'll see what I've pretty much heard loud and clear from most of the commissioners. I hope that I haven't left anything out that is, that was discussed. I think that this would be a good opportunity to, if you disagree, or if anything was left out, to have that discussion. Hopefully what I would take, um, do is take these recommendations to the Housing Committee, uh, Community Development Advisory Committee and say, here are the guardrails, or here's the guidance that's presented from the commissioners. And hopefully bring back some project recommendations that reflect the goals of the county commissioners. If I were to go kind of down the list here, as we discussed, we know that the funding will be reduced. A couple of these homelessness prevention and emergency shelter funding sources were at higher percentage amounts. Um, and it was recommended that those come down to about 30% so we can increase transitional housing and rapid rehousing funding, leaving outreach kind of at that lower 5% range. All of the commissioners really wanted projects with outcomes or accountability measures to be focused on or prioritize, which I, which I will explain to the advisory committee. Also, there were some subpopulation goals, children, households with children and veterans that were identified. Most of those being populations who have the ability potentially to have some, um, some good, um, some good recidivism rates, or I should say, um, non-recidivism rates coming back into the projects for the next two years. So any questions or any recommendations and any discussions from the, from the board?
Just a question, what is the little star at the bottom that says may not align with CHG funding?
Yeah, great question. So, um, one of the more recent developments with Commerce is that they've been kind of cleaning house as well and, and providing the, the guidance to CHG recipients that children or youth is not a, is not a, um, a goal or a priority for the Consolidated Homeless Grant. That the Consolidated Homeless Grant is through the Office of Family and Adult Homelessness, while the Office of Homeless Youth funds, uh, projects who prioritize children. Not that it's unallowable, so I want to make that clear as well. But the accountability measures that we've discussed over the last couple of weeks don't necessarily apply to children, right? So if we're looking at, um, raising the household income to make sure that recidivism doesn't increase, that wouldn't be super applicable to the children's subpopulation as an example.
And then just another clarification, so the, the, the chart on the left side with the, the, with the arrow pointing to it, that would be basically a draft makeup of total dollars after funding is reduced and the prioritization is applied?
Correct. This would be everything that you see on the right kind of reflected in that left graph. The right graph was, of course, our funding over the last two years.
Is there a way that as we keep talking about this, we might show how the total dollars are being reduced outside of our control? Cause my understanding is a big part of this, the overall pie getting smaller is not what we're talking about in terms of our own priorities. But it's just the reality of state funding being reduced, which is a huge deal. So I'm just not clearly seeing that in this chart. Might be helpful to make sure the public and others know that. So they're not thinking, oh, we're just cutting everything, cause we're not. We're being cut and then we're talking about how do we prioritize what we have?
That's a great point. And, and I do want to make that kind of clarification that CHG from Commerce is the one funding source that will be, um, or that is planned on being reduced at approximately 20%. That is still an approximation and Commerce has not sent that award yet. I think that we can make that clear during funding deliberation as well as when we receive that award. What it is, what is reflecting versus what we had previously? We just don't have that number yet.
Thank you.
So help me with the definitions to, um, address kind of a inconsistency that I'm seeing in the, in the graph on the left. We're talking about homeless shelters and homelessness prevention, but it seems like the solution to both of those is housing. And yet we've ranked housing lower than we have those other two. So there's a disconnect for me in terms of, yeah, you want to solve this problem, but you're not funding the solution. Am I tracking that right?
I think that's a, an, a great clarification in that there is a 0% recommendation for permanent supportive housing. That doesn't necessarily mean that we are not funding any projects that have housing or permanent housing as a result. Permanent supportive housing is not necessarily a misnomer, but that is a specific intervention type geared towards individuals with chronic homelessness and a disability. Typically, they wouldn't be working and that they would be going into this intervention type long-term permanent supportive housing. So imagine a project, an apartment with a case manager onsite, able to deliver support. A lot of the other categories, rapid rehousing, homelessness prevention are long-term housing outcomes. So homelessness prevention would keep someone in their current housing, while rapid rehousing would find housing and pay for a short-term subsidy to get them into permanent housing. Long-term, there would be no supportive services, like a case manager or social worker onsite. Those two projects are geared more towards providing a level of support that the individual needs until they leave the program.
So with regard to transitional housing, that, as I understand it, is assistance for folks that are moving from homelessness into housing. Uh, or, you know, for instance, if, um, a domestic violence situation will be in traditional, uh, transitional housing program. But even that is not getting a lot of funding. So, uh, again, it looks like we've got a, a segment of the community that is being underfunded to achieve outcomes.
Yes.
The other thing is, uh, how, and I, um, I appreciate, I think we talked about this, projects with accountability measures should be prioritized. How do we prioritize emergency shelter and homeless prevention from an accountability standpoint? If the feds or the state do not allow us to use that metric?
Great questions. So transitional housing is, as you say, 20% of the overall makeup. That is something that we're here to talk about, is that number too low or too high? Transitional housing, just for context, is that middle period between, um, for example, an emergency shelter, um, project and a permanent housing outcome. So maybe someone has a higher level of acuity, needs some support over, uh, uh, two years, they're able to be in that program and then transition into permanent housing. As far as, um, well, I guess I'll just leave that kind of outcome there, transitional housing, that's, I think, for, for discussion.
Okay, um, Commissioner Waldorf has a question.
I'm sorry.
Thanks, Chris. I know this is all really hard because no matter which category we look at or how much funding, there's probably always more need. But I think I really appreciate your work to look at, um, increasing the prevention piece, because if we can keep people in their home, not being displaced, uh, it saves dollars in the long run. So I definitely support increasing the prevention funding. I was wondering how this lines up? All the work that we've been doing regionally to try and make sure our county dollars are aligned with the city's homeless dollars that they receive? How does this line up? And are you confident that if we fund and make increases and decreases, that it aligns well with where the city is looking to fund or has already made funding decisions?
That's a great question, Commissioner. And yes, I'm relatively confident that these, um, these funding recommendations don't inherently increase the gap that we're experiencing in any of these intervention types. Of course, the gap is going to increase because the funding levels decreased. But if you look at permanent supportive housing at that 0%, um, that's indicative of what the county has funded over the, in the past as well. We have not, um, invested in permanent supportive housing, um, most likely because a lot of those measures are in city limits. Um, and the city funds, uh, a significant amount of permanent supportive housing projects. Transitional housing is also an intervention type that hasn't consistently seen a high level of funding. And so that's kind of one of the, one of the biggest increases that I've put in front of you is transitional housing going up to 20% from around a 5% to 7%. So of course that's going to reduce the amount of, uh, emergency shelter, um, projects that are funded. And that's kind of where that, where this discussion is coming from. So I appreciate the homelessness prevention component, Ms. Waldorf. That is also something that I've heard loud and clear from all the commissioners is that that should probably be the top priority, um, in this funding cycle is projects that are keeping people housed and not putting them back into the homeless response system.
I mean, if the focus is households with children or veterans and such, many are already, many of those populations are housed. And then they experience challenges and fall, potentially fall into homelessness. So, um, just a quick follow-up, the, what would be an example of a transitional housing project that we would be familiar with here in Spokane County?
Um, one of the ones that we currently fund is Catholic Charity St. Margaret's Shelter, in which, um, I believe they primarily, primarily serve women or women with children, um, going into that project and having a two, two-year period of service until they move out into permanent housing solutions. I believe everyone would be familiar with that project if not. I can send some information about current projects as well.
Commissioner French.
So these are dollars that are going to be spent in the unincorporated area, right?
These are dollars that will impact Spokane County recipients. Many of the applications and projects will be inherently located within the city of Spokane limits. That is something that I also heard, um, from some of the commissioners is that, um, the expectation of some outreach projects should be used to connect county recipients to, to resources within the city limits. So even though there is a, an understanding that most of the services are here, we should be doing our due diligence to connect folks in those more rural areas to, to, to projects here. So that would kind of be a contractual obligation that we would put into an outreach project, uh, for example. And you were kind of speaking to those accountability measures before. If we were to fund an outreach project, we may say something to the effect of, um, it is an expectation that you will serve, um, or make an appearance, uh, into these communities, um, attend these city hall or town hall meetings, et cetera. That'd be the same with, um, homelessness prevention, emergency shelter outcomes as well, in that we could contractually put in our expectations of the project and hold them accountable throughout the two-year period of performance.
Well, so I'm, I'm just curious about the, the comment from Commissioner Waldorf in terms of, are we aligning ourselves with the city of Spokane? Well, the other part of that question is, is the city of Spokane aligning ourselves with the regional program, which is the county's program? And so, uh, and until we get to a, a regional approach, you know, who's, who's leading this parade, uh, kind of a deal is the other question that I would have. And are we aligning to them or are they aligning to us? So, uh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I can speak to a little bit to the, the cadence that's been shifted around with the funding, um, cycles. The city, um, one, about one year ago, just put out their, um, award for these types of funds on a three-year cycle. And so this two-year cycle would allow us to sync up with them in two years from now. And then we would be on the same kind of funding cycle and we can see, um, inherently what we're doing together. There is that level of uncertainty, um, with what they're funding and what, with what we're funding. As of right now, we don't know what we're funding. The advisory committee is currently reviewing those applications. So we needed to get in those applications, see if they first meet the commissioners' kind of guidelines, put those in front of you guys. And then at that point, we would talk with the city and make sure that we're not missing any, any puzzle pieces as we put this together. And George has been, of course, meeting with, um, Don and the city of Spokane, uh, Valley to have those discussions as well.
And if we were going to, uh, partner with the city, uh, you know, accountability measures is a critical element from at least my standpoint. My suspicion is probably the majority of the board. But, and that's not a priority for the city of Spokane. So how do you align those two expectations? And, uh, you know, make sure that we're actually getting bang for the buck, for the dollars that we're spending. Cause spending money just for the sake of spending money is enabling, it's not a solution. So, uh, thank you.
I just want to say I'm glad to see the leveraging of other dollars beyond the list. Obviously, we're, we're dealing with a, a funding environment that is getting smaller, at least from the state. Um, and so the overall resources that we have to devote to homelessness is shrinking. Um, and so I think therefore it makes good sense to ask those who are applying for funds, how can you use these dollars and make them go further using other funding opportunities that might be out there, such as Medicaid as an example? You know, uh, but even, it's just an unfortunate position that we're looking at where even if we want to increase our prioritization of prevention, the total dollars are still severely shrinking. And so it's just a really tough environment.
I agree. And I would, um, also kind of put out there that that would be, one, that would be something that would be discussed at the advisory committee level. Hey, we should during this funding deliberation prioritize, um, projects who in your application review were able to leverage those other resources. I guess I'll, I'll leave it there, um, but I, I completely agree. Any other, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Any other questions or recommendations? A couple of things I've heard during this, um, conversation is that, uh, potentially transitional housing is at a level that's either, uh, maybe not agreeable right now, which we can discuss. But otherwise, um, these kind of, uh, points are something that should be brought up to the advisor committee and they should strive to meet these goals outlined in the, in the above slide.
Commissioner Waldorf.
You know, thinking about what Commissioner French said, you know, in, in terms of tracking numbers and, um, I'm assuming we would ask anyone under contract to kind of track some of the demographics of people served and where they're coming from in the community, right? So we have a sense of that. And from folks in the unincorporated areas that might be using the services, um, or outline cities and towns. The other thing that I was, I think we discussed was in the shelter contracts, I think it would be really good to have embedded in those contracts, you know, a certain number of surge beds for when we have either extreme heat or extreme cold conditions. So I don't know if you'd already worked on that or thought about that, but I would want folks that we contract with to be able to, um, you know, increase beds during that time without a huge extra cost, right, to them or to us?
Yes, and, um, kind of a little bit behind the curtain is that there is a 100,000, currently a $100,000 effectively set aside from document recording fee funds, um, to address inclement weather. The goal for that would be to, um, to recommend emergency shelter projects for funding. And then out of those emergency shelter projects, um, work with those individual projects on if they could leverage additional space, um, with additional funds from document recording fees to increase the beds during those periods of, of inclement weather. So that's one of those things that we kind of have to see who's recommend, recommended first before we, um, effectively tack on to the, their contracts to increase those beds. So is something that we're, we're thinking about, um, more to come on those recommendations.
Chris, um, with the, the homeless prevention, uh, and I, I completely agree with Commissioner Waldorf on that. I mean, it's much cheaper to keep someone from becoming homeless than to get them out of homeless once, that, once they, they've gone into that cycle. Your crystal ball, our 30% of the dollars that we will get, will we exhaust those funds during the period that these funds are available? But, but, you know, but before we get, I mean, this, this is a two-year period, I think, uh, is on what, at the end of that two, are those, is that amount of money set aside for homeless prevention going to be exhausted?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the goal, that's the plan, yeah.
But, well, no, but exhausted before we reach the end? Like, are we going to be in a situation where before we reach the end of that two years, we've already run out?
I see.
And we're going to come up short in that category? Cause I mean, if, if we're talking about adjusting, adjusting, you know, percentages here, I mean, if, if we're going to run out of that money before we get to the end of the, that two years, I, I would support maybe pulling from another area and increasing that, that, that category.
My goal, and I, I believe one of the primary responsibilities of my job is to ensure that the sub recipients are spending down appropriately. So, um, if we are spending down at a rate that is too quick per those contracts, that would, I think, be, um, on me to make sure that that didn't continue. The goal would, of course, to be, uh, to provide these services throughout that full period of performance. Can't necessarily plan for a year and a half down the road, um, but that is, of course, what I plan in those contracts is, um, is kind of spend down requirements to ensure that we are still delivering the same level of resources that we're delivering, um, in July of 2025 to, you know, May of 2027.
So, uh, Commissioner Kearns, are, are you suggesting, I just, I'm just wanting to make sure I'm tracking with you. Are you suggesting that maybe we should adjust the weighting of the funds so that we've got more in preventative programs so that we can make sure that we keep people out of homelessness? Is, is that a suggestion or is that just a question?
Yeah, that, that's what I was trying to get to. I mean, if, if the amount of, I mean, whatever that 30, I mean, that 30% looks like it's going to be, you know, just under $3 million.
Can you go to the previous slide, Ron?
Yeah, we, I, I'm sure you can stretch that out over the, the two, but, you know, to spend it efficiently or effectively, the way you would want to spend that $3 million is, you know, it, would it, would it benefit us? Would we be able to keep more people from becoming homeless if we put more dollars into that category? I guess is what, is, is the question I'm, or, or is, is the roughly $3 million about what we think we'll need to spend over the next, or over that two-year period?
I would argue, and this is, I think, coming from a place of opinion, that the need for homeless prevention far outweighs the, what we have to, in, in resources.
So there will be folks that are told at some point, we, we can't assist you because the dollar amount is where it's at, is what you're saying?
Okay, that's what I would assume, yes.
Okay.
So then where, given your experience, where would you recommend, if you're willing to, um, where should we adjust so that we can put more resources in homeless prevention? I mean, that, uh, my sense is that that's a priority for you. That's also a priority for me. Uh, I don't know where the rest of the board is, but, um, you're closer to this than I am. Is, would we take it out of traditional housing, transitional housing or rapid rehousing? Or where would we pull additional resources from to make sure that we can keep people in their homes?
I won't necessarily make a recommendation as I think that, that's what I'm, that's what I'm here to do. However, I will provide some context. Transitional housing is the largest increase from what we've done before. So that would be if, if you were to pull from that area, that would be, I guess, the least amount of shock to the system in, in what we're pulling away from what we've, we've previously done. I will also provide the clarification that my response to the homeless prevention need outweighing the resources applies to all five of these categories. And so you, you're kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul at that point.
Right. But if we were to adjust traditional housing to 15%, but 5% more into homeless prevention, um, we're not, one, overfunding that need, uh, but two, we are clearly putting ourselves in a position to where we could keep people in their homes. We could keep more people in their homes and, and less likely to run the risk of having to say no to somebody. I, I could support that if, if that's the direction you wanted to go in.
That's the direction I, I'm leaning towards. I mean, it's the situation, I mean, sort of the old, sort of, like, when you, when your boat is bringing on water, I mean, you want to plug that hole as much as you can. So, you know, I, I would think that's, I, I would think there'd be a benefit to that. I mean, I, I'm definitely open to, I mean, if, if you think this is a good, if this is a good spread, but I mean, I just, my, my mind goes to think if we can keep people from becoming homeless in the first place, that, that's a net benefit. Keep that number from, or, or, I mean, we're not going to keep the number from growing, but maybe we can slow down the pace at which that number of individuals experiencing homelessness is growing in our community. And so I, I would support increasing to the homeless prevention, so.
Yeah, so, you know, good to see this. But I think part of it too is, is how many requests are coming in and for what type of requests, um, and looking at it from that perspective. And I think, Chris, you know, you know, as, as having been doing this for several years, you know where our best bang is for our dollars. I mean, where we're really going to leverage the most effect, um, in this population. So, you know, the percentages are all just, you know, approximate percentages. I mean, that's why the, the little ampersand with all of them. You know, cause I think we all, you know, I mean, Commissioner Waldorf said it too, you know, trying to prevent people is much cheaper than, um, getting them there. But we also have to look at the whole continuum of it. So, I'm.
Absolutely. And I'm not cutting you off. I, I think you can see kind of from this slide that, um, if we were to increase the percentage in which we're putting into homelessness prevention, we are still not responding to the full requested ask of all of these projects. It's also, uh, the second biggest cost share of requested funds throughout all of these, um, intervention types. Think we understand why emergency shelter is higher than that as well. So also, yes, I think that, um, I think that stats would probably show, and I think I'm not speaking here, that homelessness prevention is probably one of the more. cost-effective housing interventions that we have.
And so when, the other thing, when we were talking, like, the Homeward Bound project of trying to get people, you know, relocated to where they want to go is, where would those funds be considered in this categories?
Yeah, great question. Those would probably come from homelessness prevention in, kind of more in line with what's called diversion. So are we, we're using funds in a more flexible way to respond to the acute need in front of the case manager. So I've got a housing outcome defined in Nebraska. If we can make sure that that's confirmed, that's a positive housing outcome. We don't want to, we don't want to lose sight of that. So again, that would be keeping, that would be diverting someone from the literal homeless response system.
So that'd be out of the prevention dollars as well. Thank you.
Well, the idea that the money, the request increases every year is not a surprise. I've been doing this for 23 years and I've never seen an agency request less in 23 years. They always request more. It's just the nature of the industry. It builds upon itself. And so it's, the only way you get less is if you contribute less and force the system to change and adjust. And I think that's, that's what I'm hearing here is that, you know, there's heavier emphasis on prevention than there is the others and stuff. So anyway, thank you.
I was just gonna agree with Commissioner Kearns and French and just say, you know, barring contrary recommendation or feedback from the board, I'd be favorable to a tweak up on the prevention and a tweak down to the transitional housing, recognizing that we still are making a significant improvement on the housing piece. I think, I hope, out of a recognition that for those who are in homelessness, the housing piece is going to be very important to get them out too. And so it's, you kind of want to do everything, but you can't. And we're in this scarcity environment where we're shrinking. And so making prevention kind of our number one, you know, raw dollar commitment, I think, makes sense. But knowing that we also want to up the transitional housing too.
Commissioner Waldorf.
Another way to just phrase it, Chris, because, you know, I'm in agreement with the conversation here, is that what you're hearing from the board, I think, is that we want to invest in prevention and diversion. Because diversion, that phrase would include diverting people from shelters into, right, transitional housing, rapid rehousing. So prevention and diversion are kind of these two animals, right? Prevention is more like keeping people housed. Diversion is keeping them from entering into a emergency shelter, which is kind of the worst situation and the hardest to get out of and the most expensive, right? So maybe, maybe there's a way to almost put a title of diversion and then have those buckets underneath. And what you're hearing from the board is those are our top priorities, diversion and prevention. I don't know, that's just my thought, if I'm, if I'm understanding it, if I'm understanding that word correctly or that term.
Absolutely, and we can, I can absolutely prioritize or discuss with the advisory committee to look at projects who are inherently using diversion in their, in their project. I can, I can flag those as well.
Because wouldn't, wouldn't transitional housing be considered? It's not keeping people in their original housing, but it's diverting them from the shelter system. It's like kind of an intermediary step, so. But I know in the past, there was some concern, maybe 10 years ago, that transitional housing, that there weren't good outcomes for families going through, like, people would be in this transitional housing unit for over a year. And then sometimes, there was a high percentage of folks that would not be successful finding permanent supportive housing. So I don't know if things have changed or if the measures or the accountability has changed on that.
I'll speak to the diversion first and then I'll speak to the transitional housing component. So I wouldn't say that transitional housing is a diversion model. I think that's its own intervention type designed to serve a specific subpopulation, folks who need it. Diversion is going to be someone who has not yet entered the homeless response system, which transitional housing would be. So diversion is almost trying to keep them from entering that situation as well and saying, can we stay with mom and dad? Can we stay with, in the same household, paying for groceries, et cetera? Trying to keep them out of what's costing, who's the funders in these kind of transitional housing, emergency shelters, costing them any additional resources. As far as that transitional housing component, I do think that there's been a change in, in, I guess, how people are looking at that intervention type. It'd be my, I guess, my opinion that all of them are inherently necessary in their own way. And so neither one is not more important than the other. There needs to be a good process of folks who can flow through the system. That's what if we're looking to reduce and end homelessness, the system needs to be able to respond to everyone entering the system and be able to put them out, or I'm sorry, and be able to house them within an appropriate amount of time. So if we don't increase, or I'm sorry, if we don't fund transitional housing at all, then we'll never meet that goal because there will be people who need transitional housing and they're not getting that intervention type. So I think it's about balance, but with a lack of resources, that's always difficult too.
So prevention and diversion are really around keeping people housed or figuring out how to use family resources or different strategies. But transitional housing is a different category. So, okay, I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George.
Just going back to the funding assumptions, so you have an estimated 20% reduction in state funding. Can you remind me where that number comes from? And then I assume that we won't really know until the legislature finishes their work. And so if it's worse or better than we expect, what's the plan for adjusting?
Great question. So the 9.3 coming from CHG or state funding is a 20% reduction on 11.2, which is our, which is our adjusted award over these last two years. That number could be significantly less because if you remember, 11.2 was not our initial award. That was a supplemental award. So it could be off of 11.2, it could be off of a 7-point, I believe, three number as well. So that would be a significant reduction there. If the funds were to come back and be less than predicted, we would have inherently a ranking in the allocations to be able to just pick the projects who fall within that number. We're also going to be selecting backups for all of these intervention types as well. So if the number comes back to be a little higher, we do have a response and recommendations from the advisory committee to fund those projects as well.
And what's the timeframe that you expect the board to sign off on the final package or contracts or recommendations from the advisory committee?
Yeah, I believe we would be coming before you for briefing late March, I believe is correct. I think advisory committee is the 13th, two weeks after that.
And when did the legislature finish?
April. So we won't have an idea of those funding recommendations until probably late April as well, maybe even late after that.
Well, don't we have to submit our plan to HUD in May?
No, we'll be submitting our consolidated homeless grant application this month, actually this week. That doesn't have an award amount. That's just, hey, we're applying for these funds and here's how we would use them if we got them.
So when I think of transitional housing, and I'm going back to my days when I was on the city council and maybe, you know, I haven't been keeping up the speed with this since leaving the city. But we used to have a program in the city called Transitions. And it was a program where women that were victims of domestic violence could go. It would be a safe harbor for them and provide them the resources and everything to sustain themselves while they got back on their feet. I know that the Y provided some of those services and there's other agencies and stuff. But when I think of transitional housing, that's kind of what in my mind sticks. And maybe it's evolved from that. But I think of those safe harbors for women and children predominantly. Some for males, but the big, the big category is the women and children and stuff. Is, is that still an accurate portrayal of that program?
I believe it's an accurate portrayal of what that program is currently doing. I will say that it doesn't necessarily fall into what's considered transitional housing in today's standards. I will say that that's absolutely considered what's called an outreach project. So bringing, almost an in-reach project, bringing people in and diverting them to, or I should say, referring them to the appropriate resources. That would be an absolutely eligible outreach project. And that project could refer people to your YWCA's or to your projects who serve women who are fleeing domestic violence.
George, did you have a comment?
Just a couple of clarifying things. So Commissioner French, you had mentioned the HUD plan due in May. That is true. We do have a separate plan there. Yeah, no problem. And then, and then transitions, there is transitions, the actual agency itself and their Transitional Living Center that's over in the kind of the Northwest neighborhood that does, does that two-year programming out of, out of their facility there. And that more is kind of a limited term, permanent supportive housing for the right type of client there. Oftentimes, those folks are waiting for a HUD, or sorry, a Section 8 voucher or something like that. Or they're, like Chris had mentioned, St. Margaret Shelter with Catholic charities, where they do a lot of rapid rehousing out of that. So it's a catchment without having to go into a shelter before folks are exited into their own permanent housing in typically standard market rate apartments.
Okay, are there any other comments for Chris? I just want to say thank you for all your hard work on this because I know it's been a lot, meeting with each of the commissioners and making sure you're, we're talking through, you know, what our thoughts are for for it as you go back to the committee. So thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, it's been my pleasure. Thank you guys so much and I'll see you guys in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, sounds good. Okay. Thank you. That's going to take us to Scott Chesney.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for the time set aside for this. This is the first time this year we've come before you to talk about the comp plan and where we stand and get some feedback from you. We've got really kind of a two-part discussion item today. The first one, we'll talk about kind of the pending issues that are timely, which is the land capacity analysis and the beginnings of the urban growth area discussion. And then we'll talk a little bit about the first round of feedback we received when we did our three charrettes out in the community. And we got pretty good attendance at all three. One actually was almost 100 people and they were there in the East Valley chiefly to protect, in their words, odist orchards because they were also a little bit spooked from the Liberty Lake sewer and water action earlier in that week. And so that, but what's interesting about it, we'll get there, is when they, when we talked to them about what we were doing that night and what we were not doing that night and that we'd not be taking any action on that kind of sewer discussion, we asked them to stick around and give us their feedback anyway. And almost all of them did for, you know, a good hour and a half. So it was, it was really enjoyable. What you can see up now is a summary of how we do the comprehensive plan, where it's cited in our CWs. And importantly, that the Growth Management Act considers the county as the regional government. That's important for a number of reasons. It means the, all of the city and town plans need to be consistent in conformance with the county plan. And we're doing that through our steering committee. It also reflects the fact that the county under GMA is held accountable for the urban growth areas and for making those decisions upon recommendation from the other electeds. Next, please. This is a slide that recognizes the complexity of what goes into a comprehensive plan in Washington State. You can see the blue bubbles are typically state or regional policies. And then the black is the implementation side. And what's maybe subtle in this is when you get to implementation and you get to, you know, county policies, we will now be starting to talk to our fellow department heads and directors and looping them in. You know, public works, for example, and transportation and even community, community development. The housing issues that are working in Georgia's shop are going to fall right in line with the housing issues that have to be in the comprehensive plan. So we will be meeting more with our directors in the near future. Next, please. This is a permit map, pretty much the last 15 years. SRTC keeps these data, we submit, cities do. And what you can see, there's, there's a handful of concentrated areas on the edge of the metro core. From, kind of from west to east, you can see the West Plains out there, Eagle Ridge, south of the city. The Five Mile Prairie has an enormous amount of growth in this amount of time, the Wondermere area on the north. And the, again, more significant growth in the East Valley. It's the city of Spokane Valley and the edge of Liberty Lake. It's harder to see because it's a scale. But the only other concentration is really the Kendall Yards project downtown. And you can kind of just see that, the commercial blue and the orange dots for residential and a little bit of a cluster. This is important for a couple of reasons. One, it very graphically points out that the growth in this past 15 years has been predominantly on the edges of the cities, not within the cities. And for those that know the city's comp plan and its centers and corridor strategy, what this is showing is a reflection that while the goals and objectives of the centers and corridors were in place, their development regs really didn't let them build that way. You do not see those concentrations on here that you might. Now, they're going currently in a more aggressive direction in the future and we're going to talk about that here in just a minute. Yes, of course.
Just in terms of the dots, the blue is what?
Commercial.
And the orange is?
Residential.
Okay, but it doesn't distinguish between multifamily and single?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Next, please.
Just a question, is it, is this map follow-up, sorry? Is this map from SRTC?
Yes, it's based on building permit data that all of the municipalities send to them annually.
Yeah. Is there, maybe it's a question for SRTC, but it'd be interesting to see the orange differentiated between single and multifamily, if that shows any additional patterns.
We, we have that.
Oh, good.
We can make that of it.
I'd love to see it. Thank you.
It, as you imagine, when you get to the bigger scale of the metro core, it gets a little messy when you break it down into, you know, five or six categories. But we have that and we'll send you a copy. Next, please.
So, I'm sorry, before you leave, the, the map is terribly outdated. I mean, you don't show the Amazon Fulfillment Center or any of the other distribution facilities on here. The other development for Parker and things like that, and McFarland are not shown. I mean, there's a lot of commercial development that's occurred on the West Plains that's not reflective on this map.
That's, that's a good observation. We will check into that and make sure we get this updated. What you will see on the next slide is the first path of allocations. This is continuing to be refined as we move. But the bottom line part is we're still expecting about 100, about 100,000 new residents over this planning period. 30,500 of those are projected in the unincorporated urban growth area. 23 in the city, roughly 21 in the city of the valley. Liberty Lake, 8,700, Airway Heights, 6,600. So those are the raw allocations that all of the planning groups have been working with. Next, please. This is the basic methodology of how we're looking at available land. And you've seen many of these before. When you get to item six, for example, when we talk about density assumptions, that's also where we have to look at infrastructure capacity. If those density assumptions are being made that would double or triple the potential density, is there sufficient infrastructure? And some of it's obvious, water and sewer pipes. But if it's also tripling density over a small area, what's it going to do to the transportation network? What's it going to do to these other issues? So there's another layer of subtlety to this that comes as we get. So there's another layer of subtlety to this that comes as we get into the raw directions. And then one of the last parts that we do really at the end of this is we have to look at our growth areas with some eye to the market. Just because we can do the math and find five acres here and two acres there doesn't mean that those parcels are all going to be developed in the next 20 years. And some of that we try to guess and take out. But the other is, you know, going to the builders, going to others and saying, what's your system look like? You know, what happens if the land value goes from $20 or $30 a square foot to $200 a square foot? How is that going to affect the ability to build housing? And it's not just in capacity at that point. Back to Georgia shop, that's going to have a massive effect on any ability to build affordable housing with if land values are jumping, continue to jump. Next, please. These are quick assumptions. And this is what the county is using for our basic data group. So for low density, the 4.46 units an acre is based on historic trends over the last 10 years. That's roughly, that is the average density that we have seen for plats and for pieces coming in. The others are closer to their building limits. And then in mixed use, we're looking at an 18-acre allocation on 50% of the site, which is a guess. There's not a lot of mixed-use projects that have happened over that timeframe. So it's not a big factor. Next, please. Here are kind of the other pieces that we're looking at. And so when we say, for example, partially used lands and eight times value is a benchmark that we became comfortable with. Most anything under that is simply not going to develop or is a property that is not likely to subdivide its land, even if it's a fairly large size. Underutilized land by our definitions that all of the communities use typically refers to residential property developed on land that was subsequently zoned for some sort of commercial use. We just don't have enough of that particular condition to even consider trying to do the math on it. And then the rural lands in the unincorporated urban growth area. Not much around the metro core, with the exception of Airway Heights, Medical Lake. But all of these small communities, Deer Park, Cheney and the Palouse towns have fairly significant urban growth areas around them that date the beginnings of the Growth Management Act when, you know, the best assumption was, you know, we just created this new thing called an urban growth area. We don't really know what to do with it. We're going to draw some around everybody's city and hope for the best in the next 20 or 30 years. Now that we've been through those cycles, those lands that show no pattern of development and are still zoned rural, those will essentially be de-designated as we move forward. And so that'll be a change. You know, every area will have a growth area that they can justify over their 20-year period or 20-plus year period. But those that have several hundred acres that are not growing very fast, that simply by the current Growth Management Act has to be de-design. Next one, please. Here's roughly the summary of where we are with the county. We have about 1,000 acres of vacant land, a little under that for partially used. Their potential capacity is about 24,000 in our existing available lands within the urban growth area. And our task is to accommodate 30,000 plus on that. So at this early stage, what we're seeing is the urban growth area in Spokane County's unincorporated areas is not sufficient to handle the growth for the next 20 years. And we'll be looking at refining that both for March with the steering committee, where we will see, in fact, we can go to the next slide, please. We will see these data coming forward in a more finished fashion from all of the communities. Right now, this is really only showing the county, some of the smaller cities and the city itself. Those are all preliminary numbers. The city of the valley has not submitted anything yet. But here's where we get to the challenge of what we do. You can see the, in the city of Spokane, they are saying they have capacity for 30,000 residential units that could accommodate 63,000 population. That's a very big number. They, in their initial L C A report, they also are qualifying that by saying this does not take into account their recent changes of housing density, the Boca project and others. So this is, if anything, what they're saying is we are undercounting our capacity significantly based on those new density increases. For those of you that were here in 2015, the city's capacity at that time was forecasted about 39,000. And so they haven't quite doubled their capacity in the last 10 years without changing their borders. So we're curious and want to talk with them more about their assumptions and issues.
So when the city adopted its comp plan back in 2001, it projected that it could accommodate 51,000. And here we are 25 years later and they haven't even hit that number yet and stuff. So how do we validate and/or challenge the assumptions? Because the assumptions that were made by the city of Spokane back in 2001 have negatively impacted the entire county with regard to our ability to meet affordable housing criteria and stuff. So is there a process that we can engage in with them? Whether it's through the capital facilities plan or, you know, take away whatever they're smoking to get to a real number as opposed to this? Because grabbing, assuming that you can develop all of this housing inside the city is ludicrous. One, they would have to regentrify their low-income neighborhoods. And then where do you put those folks that you're kicking out of their homes? They don't have the capital facilities to provide sewer and water in their older neighborhoods. I mean, this is, I'm appalled that the city of Spokane hasn't learned anything in the last 25 years. So how do we validate?
Well, you mentioned a couple of things that we have talked with our fellow planners about. And when we've, and those of you that have been on the steering committee, we have consistently said, yes, you're doing your own land capacity analysis, but the county will check your work and you need to be able to justify your assumptions. They will not be taken at face value. The city, when they made this first presentation to the steering committee months before, they did qualify that and say, this doesn't really mean we can build this much land. It's this is the math we have that shows it's possible. It doesn't reflect, even in their mind, what's real. So we have to bridge that gap. We have to find out why we've gone to this point of publishing numbers if there's still another factor in here that says this may not be the most realistic. And, you know, is it off by 20%? Is it off by 50%? We need them to make those clarifications. For example, in their draft report, they released that just last week. So we've gone through it, but not with a fine-tooth comb. But for example, they make no mention of an infrastructure analysis for this density. And that was one of the things that we talked about very early on. You've got to show us that you have the pipes and the capacity to do this. That has not been in their land capacity analysis. So that's.
In that population analysis, how much did they allocate for Leita Valley?
They have a draft map. We didn't include it here because like that scatter map, it's very hard to see down at the parcel level. Happy to, we'll post that on our web, but I'll send you a copy too. They have added quite a lot of significant empty vacant space for development in the Eagle Ridge area.
Yeah, because they're $100 million under budget for servicing and meeting the capital needs for Leita Valley as it sits today, much less adding any more housing to the area.
And again, that is absolutely one of the questions we need to ask.
Commissioner Waldorf.
Scott, I'm wondering, trying to read all these numbers here that you have presented so far. Would it be possible to add like a total number to some of these lines to make it understandable? Like how close we are to achieving, you know, the population goals? Because I'm trying to read this, what you're saying is, am I understanding it correctly to say, for the Spokane County line, going back to your previous slide, you said, we could meet the 24,000, but the allocation is 30. Does that mean we're off by 6,000?
Yes.
Okay. But then in the case of Liberty Lake, they're saying, oh, we might be able to actually meet more than what's allocated. So that's, so these are just preliminary numbers that we're starting to play around with to understand. And each city's doing its own due diligence or the county unincorporated.
Yeah, that's correct. They're not exactly a first draft. They're more of a second draft. The cities have been working on these for at least four or five months. So they have some basis for, you know, their level of confidence in their own numbers. But like we've said, we want them to share their assumptions in more detail and also talk about, you know, the reality of doing this.
So if we were to add up the number on the far right, where would we be currently compared to where we think population will be in 2046?
With the exception that the rural numbers are not included in here at all because they don't factor into the U G A capacity, the numbers in the far-right column ultimately should add up to that 100,000 figure because they're, we take the OFM number from the state and then it's broken down by individual constituency. So if.
So yeah, so I would just say, if you could add at the bottom of this table the total numbers by column, that would sure help me just at a glance, you know, like see how we're progressing.
Yes.
Commissioner Curd.
Scott, so you mentioned the 63,000 number, but you said the city hasn't incorporated their Boca regulation and that. So are we expecting that they are going to come back with an updated number?
I don't have a definitive answer to that.
Okay.
The statement they made in their report simply said, we did not take into account any changes from the Boca or other numbers.
Okay.
Because they didn't have enough years of that being in place to put a trend on it.
Okay. And do we have any timeline on when the Spokane Valley is going to come through with their number?
We believe this week.
Oh, okay.
And we'll be preparing, you know, a summary report for the steering committee's meeting on the 19th and we'll have that out a week ahead of time. So it's, the deadlines are getting close to get us some data together.
Okay. So you mentioned if they have to sort of show their work and on how they got to that number. And then the county has to, did you say we, it is our responsibility to check their work? Or how was that, how does that process work? Say, say there is a disagreement at the end of the day with us and any one of the jurisdictions and we think their number is either too low or too high. What do we do at that point?
Our working recommendation for that is to leave the L C A results alone. Those, the individual cities have the responsibility to do that and they make their own assumptions. Where it takes the next step though, is what does that do for defining a U G A for the next 20 years? That's a step that we will continue to work cooperatively on. But if there's a big disagreement, that falls on you. That falls on you after a recommendation from the steering committee. So that is the ultimate place that the work gets checked is. It's one thing to say you've got the capacity here. It's another to say, is it real and do we have to set aside additional land to grow?
Thank you.
So I'm going to ask a couple of questions. Okay. Couple of questions I have is so, do you take into account what the previous land capacity were and what they projected? Similar to what Commissioner French was saying?
Yes.
And also, I mean, part of it is where people are choosing to live. I mean, so it's like you can't just assume that everybody wants to choose to live downtown in the city of Spokane versus, I mean, we're seeing, you know, we've seen the growth out in Liberty Lake and Spokane Valley. Also seeing the commercial growth out on Airway Heights or the West Plains, which as people want to try to live closer to where they're working, that ability. So I mean, how does that, and I'm not on the steering committee, but elected officials, I don't know how this works. How does that get taken into account as we look at this? Because, I mean, you can, I mean, I'm a C P A. So yeah, you can do the numbers and the data and really try to make them say whatever you wanted to say. But what's, you know, that hypothetical wishful thinking versus reality?
The best way for me to describe that is a reality check from the market. And it is looking at how have we developed? What are the things people are wanting to buy for housing services? And, you know, even sort of an unscientific poll, you know, our shop upstairs is processing plat after plat after plat. We're on the same pattern as we have been averaged for the last five years. All of those are essentially single-family detached housing. And so there's no question that there's still a strong desire for that in the market. And that's very hard to accommodate in a true infill strategy. You know, Kendall Yards works, but it works at a different scale than it is trying to shoehorn a bunch of infill projects into West Central Neighborhood or East Central Neighborhood for that matter. Builders like being able to have some economy of scale. We want to have, if they've got 20 acres of land and you can put 60 houses or more on it, they can gear up, they can get their supply chains up, they can have marshalling yards to do that. Build those same 60 homes on 60 separate sites all around the city is very expensive. So there's just that market reality. It's like you can have an infill strategy, but can you ever make it work? And that's what we're going to have to ask our cities.
Commissioner Jordan, sorry.
Can you just, for those of us who are a little slow, the four colored columns, can you just briefly describe what each column is?
Yes, the two on the left side. And the four that precede those are the categories of land and those are still up for grabs. We just grade those out. The dwelling units and population that are in the 2023 to 2046 columns are what is coming from the individual jurisdiction based on their projections of their capacity. The rightmost two columns are the allocations based on the state OFM number split out by the municipality. So the right two columns, that algorithm came out much earlier in early 2024 and was split out based on the recommendations from Commerce. The ones on the left are coming from the cities. So there's now, there's the tension of reconciling those two numbers.
So do we, this process will ultimately result in bringing those together?
Yes.
Is kind of what you're saying. All right, thanks.
Yeah, it starts kind of now when we get the first batch of real numbers and then we find our level of comfort in here. That helps inform us as to where we have to grow. And as Commissioner Cooney said, you know, we're all, in addition to everything else, we look at patterns of growth. Where are patterns of growing? Where does it make sense to continue growing?
So just to clarify, to follow up, so the ones on the right are a starting point from the state? And then we ask the cities to do their own? But we don't, we're not required to follow those breakouts on the right?
Well, no, we're not required. No, those numbers are the first allocation based on the state. Where this gets very messy though, is if there are big numbers on the two columns that are done by the cities, under the Growth Management Act, all growth must be allocated into the U G A until the U G A is full. So if the city of the valley, you know, historically less dense than the city of Spokane, if they were to come back with a number of even 20 or, even if they matched their number, let's say they do more, they come back and say, we've got capacity for 30,000. The entire allocation being given to us by OFM would be put, would be allocated into the U G As and there would be nothing available on the edges for future development. Unless we have a legal and compelling argument following the patterns of growth or challenging the infrastructure that can say, this is what we need to grow in Spokane County.
Are we having fun yet?
If it was easy, it wouldn't be any fun.
The, so I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, with regard to the numbers that the city. I'm assuming and correct me if I'm wrong with regard to the numbers that the city has offered up is that. They've assumed that, um, the. Change and the elimination of single family housing and allowing four units per lot as opposed to one unit per lot. Uh, they're gonna be able to achieve that in some time in the next twenty years. Is that? It's a fair assumption with regard to how they put their numbers together?
It's hard to say because they did put the qualifier in that they're not using their two new housing programs to calculate this number. Now, whether they've taken their basic zoning changes, uh, they didn't identify that specifically. So we will have to find out. That frankly, that's gotta be the only explanation. If you could grow from accommodating thirty-nine thousand. Uh, ten years ago to accommodating sixty, sixty-seven thousand without changing your boundaries. The only explanation is, is upzoning.
Yeah, and, and we know how, I mean, it took them twenty-one years to fail at developing an infill. Housing ordinance and then it took the state to come in and force it on them and stuff. So. Uh, but that doesn't change the capital facility. So have. Have the capital facilities. That are controlled by the state been factored into this conversation yet or not? For instance, widening of I ninety, especially through the city of Spokane, uh, that's. Uh, on the radar for Wash Dot, but they have no idea where they're gonna get the money at. Uh, Sunset Hill is a parking lot at four o'clock in the evenings because there's not enough housing up in the West Plains. Uh, there are other traffic congestions areas that exist today. So I'm assuming that as we develop cap facilities plans for the local jurisdictions. That at some point Wash Dot's gonna weigh in and say to accommodate this growth, you need to be able to figure out how to widen I ninety. And the bi- viaduct downtown, good luck. So.
Uh, they have not been factored in yet. Uh, we are waiting for the, essentially the first round of numbers to come out. But yes, transportation infrastructure is a significant impact on, on any growth pattern. Um, SRTC is always available and they participate with us at the planners group, the PTAC group. Um, and so they're, they're, uh, Wash Dot also participates on the planners group as well. So they're, they're deeply involved and they're watching on the sidelines right now. Let's move on. Uh, next please. We've got a few, uh, slides just to kind of give you a highlight of where, uh, where our urban growth area growth is. This is generally the valley UGA. It's, it's the, the most disconnected of the group because it's spread over with a single name. But from, you know, kind of Glen Rose area on the west and the, uh, Millwood to the north or north of Millwood over to Liberty Lake. Uh, these are the areas that exist now. And right now, if you were to build all of that out, uh, it has a capacity of about eight thousand. Next please. West Plains, uh, we know it well. Um, you have seen and we have seen. Uh, many, many comprehensive plan amendments out here. So we know the demand is high for this. What's left for residential capacity is about forty-eight hundred population. Next. The North Metro. Uh, which is, is kind of everything from, uh, you know, Meade up to Wandermere. Uh, also has, it has a little more built out, uh, but also has capacity of about forty-five hundred. Uh, a big chunk of that is, uh, the Greenstone Project at Mead Works. Uh, which is, is about fifteen hundred units by itself. Next please. And the last one to highlight, uh, Seven Mile. This has changed its character over the years with, uh, one of the golf courses going into being platted. Uh, and, you know, just to use the same example. That plat could not be supported by the existing infrastructure and is requiring. A new sewer, not just an interceptor, but a main to run from the plant itself, which you can see in the yellow on the inside of that. Uh, a pipe all the way to the treatment facility. And so that. That adds an enormous amount of cost to an otherwise building project, but that's exactly the kind of, of information we need to know to make decisions about where we're going. Next please. That is the kind of the first part of what we wanted to share with you and get any, uh. You know, ideas or thoughts about our growth areas, our priorities. Uh, if you have. Uh, areas that we should be, you know, starting to take a look at, if you've just got some thoughts about how this analysis is coming together. And then what we'll do, uh, in this last part is go over, uh, the feedback and the process we're using to talk about. The idea of placemaking, uh, which is a different way of doing plating than we've done before.
So, uh, two things, um, one, I know that the, uh, number of jobs that have been created in the West Plains is. Dramatically outpace the amount of housing available and in conversations that I've had with Wash Dot. They have expressed a desire to see more housing on the West Plains. So that it reduces the amount of traffic on I ninety as it's coming down Sunset Hill. So, um. I would encourage us to, to look in that direction as far as how we're going to accommodate housing. Uh, and then, uh, I know that the light industrial area, there's always been concern about. How, how much light industrial area we have and that area that lies southwest of the. Medical Lake interchange is now real traditional and. Uh, but we've got, uh, Highline Grain, we've got Louisiana Pacific, we've got others that could. Basically fill in that entire area within the next two years with industrial development and stuff. So. Uh, factoring that into the equation. One of the questions I have is when was, I was with the city and we were looking at Indian Trail. Um, because of transportation, Indian Trail was restricted in the amount of, uh. Uh, residential development that could happen up there. And I just recently heard that there, uh, is, uh. Interest in going into the urban reserves to the west of Indian Trail. And my memory, we committed, we being the city, not the county, but the county agreed to it. Um, that until there was another exit off of Indian Trail. We wouldn't see any more development in the Indian Trail area. Is that conversation still alive? Uh, or have people backed away from that commitment in terms of a second exit? Off of, uh, Indian Trail in that urban reserve area? And then Five Mile, we have always had interest in Five Mile. Uh, and there's plenty of opportunity for capacity, especially now that we've got. Uh, three accesses onto Five Mile, uh, which in the past. A strong road was a dream. It wasn't a road and now it's, uh, actual there. So you've got three access points onto Five Mile. Does that change the dynamic for? For housing potential on Five Mile?
Uh, answer to both, I get the both of those. I, I recall the limit on development from, uh, Indian Trail. We haven't renewed that conversation. We will, uh, because there is a proposed or an interested landowner. Uh, that is saying, we're ready to be in the urban growth area, uh, if we can. And that's a, it's a parcel. It's over six hundred acres. Uh, it's a, it's a huge parcel on that north lot. So that would add. Thousands of vehicle trips into the city on that. So we're aware of that. Uh, Five Mile Prairie, um, obviously very interesting. Because you saw the scatter diagram. It's actually grown quite a lot, uh, in its time, in just in these last fifteen years. It's all, for the most part, it's all urban reserve, which, as you know, is the first place we look for growth. Because that's what our predecessors said when they did the map the last time. It's like, here's where the UGA is, urban reserve is the next step in growing. We also know, uh, from past experience that the, a lot of the residents on Five Mile Prairie do not wanna see any more development. Uh, I think we reported to you a couple of years ago. When we were handling a plat that started in ninety-five, it came back to life. And it was one that Futurewise had considered in the settlement agreement, but it pulled out because we all thought it was dead. Hearing examiner brought it to life. We just said to Futurewise, it's like, well, this is now inevitable. Why don't we just put it in the UGA draw around, it's against the city? And the only way they would agree to that is if the county purchased all of the remaining development rights from Five Mile Prairie and extinguished them. You know, it's a totally outrageous request. Um, so. It, while Five Mile Prairie is definitely in the urban reserve, uh, we know there's quite a lot of opposition to any, any growth. So we'll. We, we can't legally take that into account until we bring something forward, but we will certainly keep you involved and the public will keep us all involved in what they're thinking. Uh, in those areas. So. Next please. You saw a version of this slide earlier. It's kind of the principles of, of what we call visioning. And the, the top one is kind of the entire summary. It's like, can we start building neighborhoods instead of subdivisions? Some of which can be built together, some of which have to be, uh, kind of linked in creative ways that are out there. Uh, and Kishner French, you mentioned the proximity of jobs and residences. That is a big priority. The system of regulations we have today, it, it really makes it very difficult to do that. And we're gonna change that or bring that to you for your consideration, a way of integrating those in a much more, uh, effective way. We have talked about lammers in the past. We have, uh, several of them in the county, two that are real candidates for consideration. One is what we're calling the North Meat Area, um, roughly Newport Highway up to Daymount Spokane Road. Uh, the, there is an existing, uh, North Forty and there's a new North Forty going in. It has, uh, zoning from the eighties that predates GMA, which is why it has the contemporary zoning on top of a Compland Lammard designation. And then there's the, uh, actual Four Lakes area, uh, which is a reasonably vibrant, low-density community. It fits in the Lammard, which means by now it can't grow. We can't, uh, provide urban services to it because that's considered sprawl. There has been some progress in the legislature on, um, what I would call Lammard reform. That's giving us and some of our other counties the chance to look at these as more of small villages than these sort of, uh. Don't touch it kind of places. And they're, from a planning perspective, they're very important for controlling and, and having places to grow. Uh, particularly if you're limited by urban growth boundary constraints in other areas. And even, uh, you know, Futurewise would agree, if we're able to make some of the lammers a little more self-sufficient. You're taking cars off the road that now have to drive, you know, downtown to Rose Hours to buy milk. And so there's a very practical way of looking at these now. Next please. We used, uh, with our consulting team, an interactive approach in the three areas. Uh, West Plains, the North Meat Area and the East Valley. And as, uh, this was done by people using their smartphones, scanning a, uh, code and then being able to respond. It's a system we're adapting to put up on our web so that others who didn't attend, we can still get feedback and information. And the first started out with, uh, these, these questions. Next slide please. And they've created. Sometimes consultants and software can be more clever than useful, but. These are, these are useful diagrams in the sense of, uh, a word cloud and you can see words that the participants, you know, sent to us. But, you know, emphasis for new development, open space, trails, parks, green, you know, transit access. So. Uh, you know, that, that's a, a snapshot of what they're seeing. Next please. What would we like to see? Parks, uh, sense of community, walkable spaces, uh, homes, trails. Uh, nothing really surprised in here. Uh, so it's, it's interesting to. Get that kind of feedback from a group of people. And this is a combined group of about a hundred and, I think about eighty or eighty-five possible responses. Uh, next slide please. And then what do we want to avoid? Again, fairly, uh. Common, you know, traffic, crime, development, sprawl, high density, high density. Uh, so there, you know, some comments coming forward, uh, directly from the community. And then the last two slides here are, uh, longer and they did not go into a cloud form. It were just statements. And they're very small. We, we'll send you this slides and, and they're not always easy to read. Uh, the consulting team. In hindsight, realized they should have had two slides, what should stay the same, what should change, instead of putting it all on one side where you have to kind of read between the lines. What people like and what they don't like. Next please. And next please. Then we did, uh, kind of the heart of this placemaking exercise is to start showing people. Examples of different kinds of places to get their feedback. Uh, we've, we picked out about ten different spots, uh, ten or twelve, I think. And a variety of them, and again, using their phones, uh, they were to rank them one through five, five being something they'd like to see. Next please. We started out with what we simply call a cul-de-sac subdivision. Uh, you know, it's not very well connected to the outside world. It's got essentially one main entrance and branching off on the cul-de-sacs. Uh, school or a park of some kind off on the side. The, the responses came out. Uh, if you take the one and twos, there's about twenty-five of them as opposed to the fours and fives of twelve. Uh, so and the ones in the middle are, are neutral, uh, not very highly thought of, uh, for a pattern of development. Next please. This one was just called a trail oriented development and what it is in a, in a nutshell is, is extending park space. Kind of linearly rather than having a, a park in the middle or a park on an edge. Uh, you know, that lake could be stormwater management. It could be irrigation. Uh, but you can see a fairly extensive set of trails, including some that go through blocks. And there's also, um, even, uh, if you see on the upper part of the lake, the residential is alley served. So there's a real variety of housing products in one neighborhood. Uh, this is an approach. We talked about several years ago when we were calling it blended neighborhoods in response to a plat that went in, uh, south of the city of the valley. At a much, much higher density than the surrounding projects. Uh, and they, at the time, there, the code had no way of shaping that in any other way. Uh, if we're to write development regs to encourage this kind of development, uh, that. Uh, you know, that, that provides guidance for the builders and investors to do that instead of just stamping out a, a subdivision. This, uh, ranked actually highest of all of these scenarios, uh, roughly forty-four in the four and five category jumped in. So that was seen, uh, as a favorable one. Next is. Old fashioned, so to speak, or what, what planners generally call a streetcar suburb. Uh, which is, uh, it was a streetcar strip at one time. That's North Monroe, uh, Corbin Park. Uh, but the pattern was up there to say, you know, this existed and in some places, if we're building, for example, the North Meat Area or a Lammard or something. Can you reinstall this pattern in some way? Uh, it, it ranks, excuse me, surprisingly high. Uh, you know, more people gave it the fours and fives than the one and twos. Next please. This is also on our north side. Um, really these absolute subdivision or separated projects that happen where. Uh, you can't get from one to the other. And interestingly, you know, the commercial corner was left open for C store of some kind. Um, to get there, you almost have to get in your car, even if you're going just around the corner to the block. It's not being connected in any way. Uh, you can see this was pretty overwhelmingly rejected by the groups. And I realize it's also hard to see the colors represent the different forums or the different charades from the intro. Uh, we had to the three in the field. Next please.
Just a question.
Oh, yes.
Are all of these pictures of somewhere here or are they illustrative?
They're illustrative. Uh, there are some from here, some from the consulting team on the west side. Uh, some from other examples we just picked out to, to identify a typology.
Got it. Thank you.
This is also a version of that blended neighborhood. What you can see is a, is a single family group of homes, but also the buildings that have numbers on them are showing units. Um, so there's, you know, quadplexes adjacent to the single family with green space around it. There are six unit townhomes. Uh, again, with some open space, also with single family detached in that project. So. Uh, it's a, it's a little higher density version than the trail oriented one. It got some negative reactions, a little over twenty and about the same, uh, positive reaction. So. From our perspective, this one kind of went right down the middle. Uh, next please. This one is more of a traditional master plan community. You know, open space amenity in the center, commercial core. I like the sort, like the streetcar strip a little bit. Uh, and then planned residential surrounding that with an institutional use at the top and some. at the top and some more commercial on the side. This, you know, we kind of got across-the-board responses, but, you know, 34, 35 or so in the plus, in the four and five category. These are harder to do. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Commissioner Walder raised her hand.
My apologies.
No worries.
Oh, would this one here be more similar to like Liberty Lake with the kind of community green and golf course in the middle? Is that what this would kind of look like?
That's a pretty good example. These are harder to build unless you've got bigger parcels of land.
Right.
That's, you know, 120 acres probably to do that on any kind of scale. So they're not as likely, but the, again, we wanted to put that typology out there so that if there was this kind of pressure on some point, you could plan it in a way that it would build itself out in maybe 20 years instead of a five-year community.
I don't need to know this right now, but could you send me after your presentation, the number of people that attended each workshop? So then I can kind of understand the scores based on, you know, who attended. So thank you.
It's pretty easy. It was a few under 20 for the West Plains, the same for Mead, and almost 100 on the east metro. Next, please. And we've got a couple of more extreme developments. This is a version of, you know, integrating residential and jobs. You can see, you know, the infrastructure even there, the trails, the sidewalks are there connecting that residential parcel with some commercial and industrial spaces. Notably, it's a lot of mini-storage, so it's not exactly a walk-to-work kind of place, but it's an example. And you can see it did not, it was not very well thought of by most of the participants. Next, please. Just a few more examples. This is the more extreme commercial side, and you can see this is pretty overwhelmingly rejected. One more. Next, please. This is a project that's I-90 on the upper right, and it's probably the most integrated example. It has several thousand units of multifamily housing, most of which are on the right and somewhat off the slide, has commercial restaurants, shops, mostly in these red pockets, and then office and business park. And so you quite literally are able to walk to work anytime you want to go here. And, you know, and not so, or not, the freeway is not an inhibitor to making this kind of development happen. Next, please. Last two. One is, again, kind of a small, integrated project between two major arterials. It created something of a, like a main street down the middle with the commercial shops on one side, the parking behind them, then the residential behind that. It's a little bit of multifamily, commercial, community center, and some open space. So there's a lot here packed into a very tight space. And so this is, this is, if we work with our builders and developers, this is maybe a kind of a model that can be used for some infill development in our urban growth areas. And last, next, please. This is an isolated project on the west side that the consultant brought in because it's like totally separated from everything else. It has the inward-facing projects. They built a community green in the center of it, and it used for festivals and other things. So it ranked fairly well. It is, in a sense, this would be what, if you could really do a Lammard properly, this would be kind of that model where you've got the green belt all the way around it that's insulating it from the other cities, but you have this fairly intense use in the middle where everything there is easily walkable. So that's what we have for our feedback from our participants. Like I said, we had just under 20, the West Plains. Several of them were there specifically to talk to us about their stormwater management issues, and we certainly knew that. The Mead area had about the same number in the Mead, I think, high school library. Interestingly, they had a choir rehearsal going on in their commons area right next door, so we had a musical serenade for that one. And those, and the predominant feel of that Mead area was, we don't want to see any more density, we like what we've got. And they were particularly reacting to some of the Complan amendments that have gone in on the Hastings-Farwell corridor over the last few years. And then the last one, the east metro. We weren't sure quite what to expect after the Liberty Lake Water and Sewer District action, which, to give you just a quick summary, the property owner, not in the UGA, on the north side of the river, right off of Harvard Road Bridge, and they got four or five property owners together to petition the sewer district for annexation into the district. The sewer district, as a special district, does not plan or abide by the Growth Management Act. They can act independently. We contacted them and expressed our non-support for that. Chairman Cuny addressed a letter. The board turned down the petition application, and that group of people, the same week, were the ones that saw our charrette happening. And I believe they were thinking that, well, if the Liberty Lake turned them down, certainly the county, you know, pro-development county will let them do what they want. And so they packed the room. We had to move the room at center place, but it was just about 100 people. And, you know, as we told them, this is not what we're doing tonight. Here's what we're here for. We understand this is how it works. They were all very polite at that point, however, they were polite throughout. And we asked them if they wouldn't mind just sticking around to give us some feedback, and better than 80 of them did. And so, you know, those big numbers you see on there were, and you can certainly tell, we kind of made a joke toward the middle of this. It's like, I looked at them and said, you know, if I didn't know any better, I'd swear all of you live on five-acre lots, because all you're talking about is low-density development out here. But what they have, when we talk about building neighborhoods, Otis Orchards, they really have their own community. I mean, they have that sense of place, they have that sense of ownership. It's not the compact neighborhoods that we saw here, but it's one that is, in our perspective, deserving of protection, you know, that that character is what people want, and that's something that should be looked at seriously. So it was an educational experience as well as a good one to listen to them.
Yeah, and I'm just going to comment on that, that I did a letter just as me as the District Four Commissioner. I did not do it on behalf of the board or any of that, just so you know. But it was just, we were getting a ton of comments and complaints and all that into my office. And so since it's my district, I did put a letter out from us that Scott and Jessica helped me draft. And so, just so everyone knows, it wasn't me as chair, it was me as District Four Commissioner.
We were concerned, and, you know, the district, in replying to my email, very politely reminded me that they don't play by the GMA rules and, you know, we should stand down. Nonetheless, they did the right thing, in our opinion. Our concern was, if those property owners were accepted into the district and they were, they have, I mean, we've been in touch with them, they've been constantly talking to us about urban growth area projects. They're prepared to pay the price to put in the sewer. Well, now we've got a sewer that's technically not allowed by GMA to exist outside the urban growth area, but it does from the sewer and water district. It would make it very, very hard for us to deny them building permits, which would be the only case we would have. We'd have to say, look, you've got an illegal sewer, and they would undoubtedly appeal that and say, no, we have a legal sewer, and now you have an obligation to serve us. So, yeah, we saw it as a challenge. We're kind of forcing the issue of the urban growth area. So it's, I'm glad the sewer district took their consideration, and now we can handle those parcels in the same evaluation as everybody else. But that's, that's what we have for you today. You can, you saw the calendar up there. We're, you know, deep into the details of where things are going. The environmental impact assessment and statement process is getting underway now. Probably the next time we see you, next quarter, we will have a summary of what that scoping process looks like, and therefore more of the idea of what those alternatives look like. So this live-work-play model being talked about, we'll have some more substance to that for your perspective. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all the information. That's a lot of information, and good job with the listening sessions out there and getting the information from people. Okay, so with that, then, we have Mike Sparber is going to come down and talk to us.
Hi, Ann. Okay, there we go. I'm here this morning to talk about sequential intercept model. And luckily, it has an acronym, so I'm going to be using those interchangeably during the presentation here. So this is not new to Spokane County. We've already had one of these done. It was done in 2018. I'll cover that kind of into my presentation here. The SIMS model was developed in the 2000s, and it was really to help communities set up the framework for those that are disproportionately represented with mental health illness and criminal justice system. It also identifies five areas of intercept that you can use and opportunities where you can make an intercept along the pathway and for, to prevent further involvement with the community justice system. Next slide, please. In talking with you all and also several conversations along the way, since we got involved with this process, we know that the jail has become the de facto place for people with behavioral health, and we're looking for opportunities along this to make interventions. So there are some key intercepts along the way that can help us along as a community to become more involved with those folks that are experiencing either co-occurring or mental health illness, to help them not reach, you know, a point to where they're further involved with the justice system. Next slide, Ron. So there was a SIMS conducted in 2018, and the Justice Management Institute, along with PRI, which is the Public Research Institute, and the MacArthur Foundation are going to come in and help us update our 2008 SIMS model. And some of the reasons for it is to revisit some of the recommendations that were made in 2018 to determine whether or not they're still accurate or their validity, along with review the impacts that COVID had on it and the continuity that, and, you know, change in any of the recommendations that were made and the continuity of those. The third is to consider some of the additional services that we have now, which includes Crisis, I'm sorry, the Mental Health Stabilization Center and some of the other changes that have happened within our community. The third is the changes in the leadership. We have a new sheriff. Myself has changed the law and justice. So we had change in the board composition, and also a change in leadership with community services. And then lastly, it's to give us a look at the regional approach, which is to work with the city of Spokane, which has just recently completed a new SIMS, along with work with the Three Bears Company, that has also done an analysis through Sheriff Knowles and Commissioner Cuny. I did have an opportunity to talk about these upfront with.
I'm just going to clarify. The Three Bears, the work done by Three Bears was through the Reese Rudin Foundation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, yeah.
Okay.
So we just were, I became aware of it, so I wanted to make sure that it was being not an isolated consulting, you know, report that we all looked at it collectively.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I did have an opportunity to meet with Commissioner Jordan and Cuny and talk about this SIMS model, along with, the mayor was involved with that, the chief of police and Maggie Yates as well, and then Sheriff Knowles. So in talking with it, we realized that some of the changes that had happened from the 2018, that there would need to be a refresh. And I worked with JMI to talk about those things. Individually, I met with all of the commissioners when JMI was in town, and we discussed some of those. So I'm going to kind of cover some of the intercepts, and I know that it's pretty self-explanatory, but I'll go through them. Next slide, please, Ron. So at the zero intercept, this is the services that are available within the community, the crisis hotlines, some of the Crisis Stabilization Center specialized programs that are set up by community services. It's really meant to address the individuals that experience behavioral health issues and have those resources available to them in the community. So this is before they're arrested, and their involvement with the first responders or law enforcement. Next slide, please. Intercept one is when they do become involved with law enforcement or emergency services. Intercept ends when, intercept one ends when they are arrested. And this includes the code deployed teams, the CIT teams, and some of those other ones, resources that they have to prevent them from having to be arrested up until the point that they do need to be arrested. And then intercept two, please. Go ahead, Ron. Intercept two is a post-arrest, once they've been arrested. And then, so when they've been arrested and sent to the jail, we look at strategies there to help them have some, rather than further incarceration or further prosecution, what are those opportunities that are available to them? We do have pre-trial services, which does do a screening upfront, and they're looking for a lower level of way to address the violation without having to spend a lengthy time within that jail, further incarceration. Intercept three, and we could cover these more in depth if you guys want to talk to them. I'm just going to go through the intercepts. Intercept three is once they do make their way into the jail, they're in a pre-trial status. It identifies intercept four and five to come in concert with this, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. And really, at this point right now, it's about identifying the appropriate courts, and if there's appropriate courts, specialty courts, they could take part in. They'll also come to some remedies and treatment options that are, instead of being incarcerated, along with, if they are incarcerated, what are those opportunities we need to do for reach-in and so forth to reach their, to reach out to them to provide the services as well. Intercept four.
Mike.
Yes.
Just a comment. You know, as we present some of this in the future potentially, can you go back one slide, Ron, to the three? As I think about the treatment court pathway.
Yes.
Maybe it's more useful to say an alternative to traditional prosecution, because it still is a form of prosecution, and maybe incarceration without treatment or something like that, because I think as the board knows and as everyone knows, some of those programs are pretty tough, right? There's an accountability aspect to it, and if you violate, sometimes you are incarcerated. So I just thought that might be useful context.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Next slide, Ron. Intercept four is really the re-entry portion of it. Yeah, it's where intercept three concludes, I'm sorry, and someone is released from jail. It's about what resources are available to them once they re-enter the community. And it, you know, includes transition planning, planning to identify and coordinate care once they are released, and those type of, those type of services that are in the community. And then lastly, the next slide, please. Next slide. Is the community corrections model that we've spoke about on many occasions. Right now, intercept model looks more like probation. So when they have a violation or brush with the law again while they're out on release, it's usually their probation officer that brings them back to jail. And one of these things are the things that I've been pretty passionate about all along, which is, you know, mistakes along the way don't, shouldn't necessarily mean a return to the booking area, that there should be some kind of, you know, some kind of graduated scale to step them up and step them down for violations that they have out in the community. So this is what that looks like, and entertains the special behaviors and caseloads that the probation officers handle on a daily basis and look for violations. So if you look at the next slide, it really just breaks it out in a linear fashion for what this looks like as far as all the intercepts, and they'll take us through each one of these intercepts and identify services that are connected with them. Next slide, please. We're not the only one in the state of Washington to do this. Watkin County has done one, and they've since refreshed theirs, Yakima as well, and King County has also done a second look at their previous SIMS model. And you can also see that Benton and Linwood have also done these. Last slide, please. So JMI and PRI will be hosting the SIMS Model Symposium. It's going to be on March 26th and 27th. It's going to be at Northern Quest Casino. I'm not sure most folks know where that's at. And on March 26th, it will be. And on March 26th, it will be a full day from zero, you know, from eight o'clock to 4:30. Now, March 27th, it'll be from eight o'clock till noon. There'll be a light breakfast and lunch provided, and many, many invitations have already been sent out. You should have also received invitations to attend as well. And if you haven't, let me know because they should have already been to you. Questions?
Mr. French? No.
It's pretty self-explanatory.
All right, just thanks for the work on it. I'm, I think it'll be a useful document, I guess ultimately, that's produced as we kind of continue to go forward, building on all the work that's been done over the years to kind of help us identify where, where are the gaps, if any, that we could focus some attention on. And then maybe also what areas are working well that could be, you know, scaled up, so to speak. And then I think this is a good opportunity to bring together the work that we want to do to update past mapping with work that the city's done, Race Rude Dean Foundation funding and just try to bring that together. You know, you could have 10 different maps, so to speak, of your regional system. And so I like that we're trying to bring the various pieces together under, under one analysis. And everyone can have their own window, but it's good to also bring it together because it, it is one big system.
Commissioner Waldorf and then Commissioner Prince.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, that, Commissioner Jordan, that's what I was going to be, I was going to comment on. So, so just to clarify, do we already have a map that was done for our system? And is that something that is accessible? Or is it just completely out of date and not worth looking at right now? And then number two, I appreciate you bringing all the maps together. So hopefully we, I mean, there's lots of different ways that you can address. I'm sure substance treatment in and of itself, you know, the, the system is independent of criminal justice, but it's interrelated, right, with criminal justice? So anyway, I'm excited about bringing all the different efforts together. But yeah, I'm just wondering, the map that we do have for Spokane County, is it just really out of date at this point and not worth, like, just reviewing just to get a sense?
And so we have it. I have. I'll give you a copy of it. I think I've already given, provided a copy to Commissioner Jordan and Cuny, but I'll also make sure that all the board has a copy of it. And you'll look through the list. There's some things we've accomplished. It's, you know, that along the way, but there are several things that are outdated and need to be updated. And then, and then to your last point, this is really a good opportunity because like I said, the city just finished a Sims. Maggie Yates has completed one there. And then going back to the Three Bears study that was done as well. So this is going to be a good time to marry up all those documents and for us to have a pretty comprehensive look.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Prince.
Yeah, the, the two days in March, I'm going to be traveling. Is it okay if I have my, my exec attend that instead of me? Thank you.
Yeah, we just want the input. We want the involvement. We want to, you know, put our best foot forward, so.
And I think for, for me, Mike, just, you know, it, it really is important, as, as the commissioners have said, for us to really understand, you know, all these different projects that are going on and how do we integrate them all together? It, it was when I was down in San Antonio looking at the homeless haven and their, their jail and their crisis center that I, that's how I got to know that Three Bears was having, was up here doing a, a study, you know, was consulted to come up here. And I was like, really? Okay. So, so I mean, so I think there's just so many things that are kind of going on out there that we don't know about, that we are really trying to say, if this is happening, let's, how do we bring, you know, the expertise that everybody's bringing to the table and, and see what's really going on? And Commissioner Waldorf, from 2018 till now, I mean, just the difference that we've seen in, in the amount of fentanyl and what's happening there. I mean, there's been a lot of changes, you know, just culturally that have gone on that I think, you know, is important to be taking a look at versus what was happening in 2018. And it was, you know, before COVID. And I just, there's, I think there's a lot of reason to update it at this point in time. And then I think when Commissioner Jordan and I were meeting with city people and, you know, trying to figure out how, how do we look at this holistically across the, the spectrum here in the county? That's when we found out that the city had done their Sims. And so, yes, how do we integrate that and really look at it? Because a lot of the things that are being done, I think the county is really the one doing them as, you know, with the stabilization center, with trying to look at getting the 23-hour crisis, you know, up. You know, so, so it's important for us to really all be talking and, and working together.
Yeah, and it should make sense. We should be looking at all those resources and putting them together, you know, obviously, so. You have a question?
Just add, to add on to that, the city's map was a little city-focused, admittedly on their part. And I think they were, they were very happy to kind of share that with county. But if we're not looking at both of them, we're missing something. So I think it's all good.
Yeah, I think all those off-ramps are all interconnected, so it's going to be important for us to look at them. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that takes us to miscellaneous. I have a few myself, I know, before we get to some of the others. So on proclamations, Justin had sent me a proclamation that I think we had done last year for the Disability Awareness Month. So just wanting to get head nods for that. I think that's coming up for the month of March. And I think further out is the, I want to say it's the Mental Health Awareness Month as well. And I think we'd done that as well last year. So I think that's coming up in, I want to say April or May. So it's, it's a little further out, but I'm just going to ask now. So I'm seeing head nods. And then this morning, there was a Women Helping Women proclamation that we were being asked to sign, but I don't remember having it come before for head nods, so. Okay, who was bringing that forward? Okay. Then we need to make sure that if, okay, Pat?
Hi, that's Commissioner Waldorf. I think we were going to talk about it tomorrow at the briefing under miscellaneous, but we can talk about it now as well.
Okay.
There was just an email out to all commissioners, was it a couple of weeks ago? And I, my office responded and said, I'd be willing to provide the proclamation or give the proclamation. So I'm not sure if it went through all the normal process, but I'm happy to support it. It's Women Helping Women Week, I think, next week or the week after.
Okay. No, I mean, I think we're all happy to support it. I think we just need to make sure it comes through the, the process, that it comes before the commissioners first to make sure that we all agree to, to moving it forward before we, you know, it goes, goes to the point where it's seeking signatures. So I'm, I think, I'm not sure, Pat, if that's through your office or with Gina, so, the clerk.
Yes, I have the proclamation drafted. It's ready. So if you're all good with it, I can circulate it today for your review. And then we can get final head nods tomorrow.
Okay, I think you have head nods. I mean, I think it's going to be okay. So, I mean, I think this is, this is that process. I just, I'm bringing it forward since I saw it and I hadn't seen that it was, had been, you know, come before us at that point. So just need to make sure we're following our protocol. And then the other item I have is President, Council President Betsy Wilkerson, I met probably a week ago. It was before Valentine's. I'm seeing her, her email to me was on the 13th of February. I think we met the week prior to that. And I thought we were going to attach it, but I've not seen it attached to today's agenda. She was just saying, you know, thank you for the time last week as we discussed the possibility of a joint meeting between commissioners and council members. There are many issues that are regional that we have not discussed together. My first suggestion would be to use a joint meeting to, for opioid drug use and what is happening regionally. Is it? It's queued up for tomorrow. Okay, sorry. No, let's just do it today because I want to, I want to try to get this out. So it is on tomorrow's. So I'll just, I guess we can talk about it tomorrow. But if you would take a look at that, I don't know that we've ever done a joint council-commissioner meeting, have we? Not since I've been here.
I'm sorry. We've, we've, we've done, we've, we've done it with the city of Spokane. We've done it with the city of Spokane Valley. And for some reason, I want to think that we also did it with Liberty Lake, but I could be wrong. But, you know, the, the way we structured them was that we had a very set agenda and timelines. Otherwise, we, we made the mistake in the first meeting where we, we left the conversation open and we accomplished nothing. So, you know, having an agenda with timelines on it proved to be much more successful.
Okay, very good. I think that's what we would want to do because I would want to make sure we can discuss the issues at hand. And, and I would say one of the things that I would like to make sure we include in, in the agenda, and we can all talk about that, you know, more if you guys think about it today. We can talk more tomorrow. And you'll, so in the agenda package should be this letter from Betsy email. You know, just kind of starting to look at how quickly we want to try to do that. And also, you know, what the topics would be that we want to talk about. Because I know for me, I think Shrek is one of those topics that, you know, Scott and I have been meeting with the mayor, but we haven't been meeting with the council. And so, so there's, I think, some, sometimes some disconnect. And I know Chris, you know, in some of our meetings that we've had, you know, it's been with the mayor, not with the council president. And so how do we, you know, making sure we bridge that gap?
The other thing that I, in our previous attempts at this, if the agenda is balanced so that you've got half the issues, the city issues, half the issue are county issues, you don't walk away going, well, that was a big waste of time because you didn't talk about anything that related to whoever the body was. So that would be the other suggestion I'm probably throwing there.
Okay. No, thank you. I will seek your advice in helping set the agenda. Yes, no, I, yeah, because like I said, I, I don't know how long ago, but it was pre-Josh and I, so.
We've talked about doing it, but we've never done it.
Yeah. Did we do the one on, no, that was before you too. We did one on land use and a number of other topics.
We're so young. Commissioner Jordan.
No comment on that, but no, I think it sounds like a good idea. I just love to take a look at the email and then we can probably further talk about timeline and agenda.
Okay, perfect. Okay, any other miscellaneous items that come before us today? No, Scott? No executive sessions?
Wow, no miscellaneous and we'll, we've got what exec will do tomorrow.
Okay.
For once, nothing from me.
Very good. Okay, Pat?
Hello, good morning again. We are working on a draft press release with Justin for anticipating consideration tomorrow, I believe, on the Stars contract. So stay tuned for that. I should be able to brief you on it tomorrow, assuming that's still on track.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, with nothing else to come before us, we will adjourn for the day and see everybody back tomorrow morning. And hopefully we'll have.